We'll call the meeting to order tonight. Thank you for bearing with us through a couple of technical issues as we go. Terry, can you confirm that we're in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordin?
Here.
Commissioner Zur?
Here.
Commissioner Bika? Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Well, now move on to our pledge of allegiance. Tonight's pledge leader is Aaron Samansky. Aaron is a fifth grader at Locust Lane Elementary School. Aaron is engaged, tremendously inquisitive, and extremely kind to everyone. He's a student who leads by example by remaining on task throughout the day and always ask questions to help clarify or push for deeper thinking and understanding. More importantly, Aaron sets a great standard by always displaying kindness and respect to everyone he comes in contact with. Aaron, thank you for leading us today. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. And Aaron, if you want to, the flag's over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Aaron. Now move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt the agenda for the evening.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, sorry, Commissioner Clements, I'll make sure we give you a little extra time there for your votes. Welcome. Okay, so now we'll move on to our recognitions, and as always, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Nordin, board members, student representative, and guests. First off, not on the agenda this evening, but it's an additional. It seems that October is the month for recognition and celebration. I don't think we can have enough of that, but this month is National Principals Month, and we wanted to express our gratitude for our hardworking principals, and we have a few in the audience this evening, and our assistant principals throughout the schools. Thanks so much for your leadership and service to students and families. For families and students, be sure to thank your principal during National Principals Month. Onto the agenda, the first custodial workers' recognition day was yesterday, October 2nd. We're incredibly appreciative of our custodial staff who are working hard to keep our buildings clean and safe, for students and staff in the community. Thanks for all you do. And tonight, we have three of our custodians joining us, Randy, Ezekiel, and Julie, and Paul Tollers in the back as well. We can get a picture after I talk about the other recognitions, if that's okay. Secondly, we have National Merit Scholarship semifinalists Joseph Grant and Damian Walker, both Memorial seniors, are semifinalists in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program, and they have an opportunity to continue in the competition nationwide. A little background on the scholarship, in early September, more than 16,000 students, or approximately one-third of the 50,000 high school scorers, are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that academically talented young people from all parts of the U.S. are included in the talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state representational basis. Semifinalists are the highest-scoring entrants in each state. To be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, semifinalists must advance to finalist standing in the competition by meeting high academic standards, and all the requirements explained in the information provided to each semifinalist. We wish both Joseph and Damian well. And then I will come up here as soon as I finish. With our school board recognition week is this week from the state of Wisconsin. School board service begins when a community member wants to help children in their public schools reach their potential. These community members bring different backgrounds, interests, and passions to their board service, but they share a belief that all students can achieve. Throughout the year, locally elected board members devote a significant amount of their time and energy to our public schools because they believe in the importance of strengthening our students in our communities. In addition to attending meetings, they spend countless hours preparing for meetings, studying issues, and participating in professional development. Our deepest appreciation here in Eau Claire is extended to the dedicated board members who provide the public voice in public education. Please join us in recognizing and thanking our local school board members for their work, leadership, and public service during Wisconsin School Board Week, October 2nd through the 8th. So at this time, I'll join the custodians and Joseph and Damian for pictures up front.
Do you want a picture? Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
Oh, you're good.
Squeezed in there.
All right. On three, one.
Thanks again for all.
Thank you.
Well, now move on to tonight's public forum. The school board provides up to 30 minutes in which community members may address the board. Each community member signed up will be allowed up to four minutes to address the board. I will interrupt you after your four minutes is up. The school board does not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in our public forum. When you come up to speak, you can go ahead and stand right by the microphone there, although it's a document camera. Anyway, you can stand right there, and if you would please state your address for the record. Tonight, we will start with Sam Chapman.
My name's Sam Chapman, and I live in Altoona. And I just think athletics is way too much emphasized in school these days, and you spend way too much on athletic fields, football fields, weightlifting equipment, basketball courts, huge buildings. I think you should get back to basic education. Like I was, I used to live in Menominee, and this girl, which wanted to stout cashier, the bill was like $3.25. I gave her $5.25 so she could figure it out easily. She couldn't even figure out $5.25 minus $3.25. I don't know where she went to school, but that's pathetic. It's just pathetic. And I think you guys should just go back to basic education. Obviously, in math class, if the calculators and computers are thinking for the kids, kids aren't thinking of themselves. I mean, that's ridiculous. She's going to college, she can't figure out $5.25 minus $3.25. I don't know exactly what it's like here, but I think you guys coddle the kids way too much and don't demand or expect too much out of them, and they let them get away with, you know, less things. I mean, you just don't demand or expect too much out of them, and they could be doing a lot better than what they're doing. I think that's the way it is all over in this country. The kids aren't mandated too much or expected too much out of them, so they don't give out much. You should go back to basic education instead of athletics. You know, physical education is supposed to be about the average kid, physically active the rest of his life, like jogging, or running, weightlifting, or yoga, or the basic, you know, his own physical fitness the rest of his life. That's supposed to be about competition for years in high school, and then a college potato the rest of his life. It's not supposed to be about that. And I think it's pretty, really, the education system is very bad here in this whole country because you don't demand much out of the kids, you don't expect much out of the kids. Even when they're doing good, those kids could do better. And so much emphasis on athletics seems like instead of the band, or choir, or Spanish club, French club. I mean, it's just really bad. You spend tons of money on big buildings, a set of teachers who could relate to the kids a lot better. And, you know, where I went to school, the jocks and smokers and the band, and a lot of times, kids don't work together because there's, you know, separate groups, and kids should work together. You know? I went to school, even every class started on time, and this is a school board meeting, and you can't even start on time. That's pathetic. Very pathetic.
That concludes our public forum for the evening. We'll now move on to our regular reports. We'll start, as always, with our referendum committee report. Commissioner Lyons?
I'm going to yield my committee time to the superintendent so he can talk a little bit about the referendum meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. With the first slide, we've got six bullet points. Two weeks ago, Market and Johnson had filmed a video highlighting our major referendum projects, including various administrators in the district, not just district level, but at the school levels as well, especially the four with major projects. We've also continued our staff and community referendum informational sessions. Internally, as of right now, we've completed 14 meetings of our 22 schools and buildings at this afternoon. We informed our staff and families again with links in a message last Monday, our message to families. Continued our communication plan assisted by Market and Johnson. We have a weekly checklist to follow for timely communication to our stakeholders. One such item was a backpack flyer for our pre-K through fifth grade students last week, and this is shared newsletters, will be shared newsletters at secondary level and posted on our informational website. We're obviously finishing preparations for our first public informational session at South Middle Schools IMC on Thursday evening at 6:30, and we have weekly Monday and Friday internal meetings to gather all FAQs from our presentations, followed by website additions based on those questions and answers. So that's the completed and ongoing tasks. The next slide, again, glad to highlight this in public, our referendum website, which we update weekly. The FAQs are, again, they continue to grow by the week, questions to email, we've been able to utilize that and directly respond to people, community listening session information as well as requests for other information, too. And finally, you know, the larger community sessions, we want to continue to promote those that we begin this Thursday. Community members, families, or staff could email us at the address below. If something comes to them after every meeting, we highlight that. This has been live for over two weeks, going to every school and district, as I mentioned before. We've completed 14 of the 22 sites, with more to follow this week. We want that communication internal first, inside-out. Staff are very trusted individuals in this community. And again, constantly updating our webpage and FAQs, it's fluid, adding every week. Again, we want to ensure that everybody has the information they need to make a decision in the upcoming election. That should do it for the referendum updates.
Thank you. Now move on to our legislative liaison, Dr. Johnson.
There are no legislative meetings at this particular time.
Thank you. A rare occurrence. Then we'll move on to our consent agendas for the evening. For each of the consent agendas, the board acts with one vote without discussion. Each of the board members has been provided background information prior to the meeting or we've discussed it at a previous meeting. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. We'll start with the superintendent's consent agenda tonight. Superintendent's consent agenda includes human resources employment report, 2021-2022 budget adjustments, gifts in the amount of $9,775 for the period of August 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2022, payment of all bills in the amount of $7,846,241.26, and net payroll in the amount of $3,326,983.31 for the period of August 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2022, and Head Start annual report 2021-22. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Second. Terry, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Farrar? Yes. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Well, now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda includes minutes of board meetings, September 19th, 2022. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Consent agenda is approved. I will now turn to the main focus of our meetings, which is the focus on student results. I think we have a focus on EMLSS, disproportionality progress, and student achievement data. I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson and Executive Director Van Pley.
Yeah. All right. Good evening. Tonight, I will be focusing on the implementation of the EMLSS and the impact it will have on student outcomes. The intended outcomes for tonight are to continue board understanding of the EMLSS and systemic implementation, sharing the ECAC Teaching and Learning Strategic Plan, answering the why for Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3, new student data, disproportionality progress from 2017, share what our goals and what we are doing about it, and explaining ECAC's achievement data and goals through 2029. I'm going to start us off with the definition of educational equity. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction defines educational equity as every student having access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education across race, gender, ethnicity, language, ability, sexual orientation, family background, and/or family income. It's important to know our work is grounded through the lens of this definition. Since 2017, ECAC has been working to implement the Equitable Multi-Level System of Support (EMLSS) framework across the district and in all schools. This is a layered approach to meeting the needs of all students regardless of where they are in their learning journey. Implementing an equitable multi-level system of support means providing equitable services, practices, and resources to every learner based upon responsiveness to effective instruction and intervention. Schools provide varying types of supports at differing levels of intensity to proactively and responsibly adjust to the needs of the whole child. This is the Eau Claire School District's response to meeting the needs of every child in our district. Over the 21-22 school year, the Teaching and Learning Department developed a strategic plan to fully implement the EMLSS framework. We know we need to create systemic change in ECAC to improve student outcomes for students. This system's work will take time, and the Teaching and Learning Strategic Plan will be our guide in doing so. A closer look at the strategic plan. A strategic goal has been established to measure the progress and effectiveness of our work. The strategic goal, schools in collaboration with Teaching and Learning and other departments will provide equitable services, practices, and resources to meet the needs of every learner in the Eau Claire Area School District by 2029. The Teaching and Learning Strategic Plan has two focus areas with a goal for each to measure progress of the strategic goal. Focus 1, establishing a strong universal level, and Focus 2 is implementing Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports all through a continuous improvement model. A closer look at why we established Focus 1. Within the continuum of supports, we consider the universal, or Tier 1, level to be the most important to the success of the system. Here, all learners experience good first teaching based on high academic standards and behavioral, social, and emotional expectations, an environment that is conducive to learning. In sustainable systems, at least 80% of learners have developmental, academic, behavioral, social, and emotional needs met through the universal level of support. As you can see, our goal to create a universal level that more than 80% of students are meeting benchmark. The Teaching and Learning Department has identified these five evidence-based strategies to guide the strategic plan: collaboration, guaranteed and viable curriculum, high-quality instruction, strategic assessment, and family engagement. These strategies inform and impact each other. The success of these strategies is a district's ability to develop and implement these simultaneously to have the intended impact, research supports for each strategy. We are committed to strategies that will create change. Next, I will go through each one of these strategies to share why. I will start off with family engagement. Families are key collaborators in an EMLSS, and we must strengthen these partnerships. We will be using the three Es: embrace, engage, and empower to form the foundations of relationships with families through their child's educational experience. Why a guaranteed and viable curriculum? Delivering high-quality instruction starts with identifying the academic standards, behavioral expectations, and social-emotional competencies. Effective districts provide students with access to the same curriculum content in a specific course and at a specific grade level regardless of their assigned teacher. They ensure teachers can teach the curriculum in the amount of instructional time provided. High-performing districts have done this work to establish a rigorous, guaranteed, and viable curriculum. By doing so, this reflects a commitment to both excellence and equity. Establishing a sustainable system of support relies on stakeholders working together and holding each other accountable towards a shared goal of success for every learner. This means collaboration occurs across the district, across settings, throughout levels of support, amongst diverse stakeholders, across programs, and beyond the school system. When there's a process for a regular flow of information among these levels or across teams, this helps ensure the separate parts of the system work in unison. Strategic assessment systems measure progress towards college and career readiness, including academic preparedness and social-emotional competence across classrooms, schools, and districts. When implemented strategically and systematically, assessment systems, including formative, interim, and summative measures, lead to improved student outcomes. I will share the importance of high-quality instruction through the lens of the work we did this summer with establishing Eau Claire Area School District's instructional framework. ECAC's framework is an interrelated set of systems implemented with fidelity to provide high-quality instruction within a supportive learning environment across all classrooms and schools. How do we ensure high-quality instruction is occurring across every classroom? As we do this work, these three systems must be in place. I've shared the importance of establishing a guaranteed viable curriculum. The next system is the instructional delivery. These are the practices and behaviors of the adults that deliver the instruction. As an example, we want to ensure that there are evidence-based and culturally responsive practices occurring in the classroom that meet the needs of the students that are in front of them. The last system that is key in this framework is professional learning. We have established these four: collaboration, coaching, mentorship, and professional development training as necessary in supporting staff in this very important work. Now we'll move on to Focus 2. Schools provide a continuum or multi-level system of proactive and responsive supports built to match the range of learners' developmental, academic, behavioral, social, and emotional needs, the key here being proactive supports that are equitable and appropriate for the learner being served. Our goal is to have Tier 2 and Tier 3 in place at all schools by 2029. Why Tier 2 and 3 supports? As a reminder, Tier 1 is the universal level that all students receive, and that tier is on the left-hand side here. We hope to be able to serve 80% of our students through this tier. However, some students will need something more and different, whether that is for a student that is not meeting benchmark, or for students that are above and beyond benchmarks. This is when the continuum of supports comes in. The selected, or Tier 2, includes supports intended for learners whose developmental, academic, behavioral, social, emotional needs extend just beyond the reach of universal. This level is intended for short-term intervention targeting the specific skill needs of learners so the universal level can support their educational need. In sustainable systems, 5% to 15% of learners across this level of support in addition to the universal level are successful. The intensive, on the right-hand side, is intended for learners who needs extend well past, beyond the reach of universal. In effective systems, only 1% to 5% of learners need access to this level. You will also notice that students that qualify for services like special education, English language, or gifted and talented are also considered a Tier 3 support. This is that multi-level system of support we are striving to put in place for students. So what happens when we don't have these supports in place? When students need something more and different than the universal, what is available? This is how ECAC has been functioning for many years at some levels, and this is why we have a focus on implementing Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports. As you can see, there's a gap in this continuum of support, and we can't be proactive and responsive to students' needs as we don't have these systems in place, or the resources to support students. However, what is in place is our special education and English language programs. These programs have guaranteed resources and services available to students that qualify for services. Sometimes, these are the supports are the only way to meet the needs of students, or simply, students just do not get what they need. So what is the impact we have on students and the goals that we have to create change? When we are aligned and coordinated with the work of Focus 1 and Focus 2, it will have an impact on students, especially if we stay focused through an action plan and setting targets. I'll be sharing with you the baseline of how we will be monitoring our progress and reaching our goals by 2029. We will be using the results of the Ford Exam and ACT to measure our progress. This data helps us understand how effective our systems are in meeting the needs of our students. When this data moves, we will know we are making a difference, and when it doesn't, we will look at our practices, resources, and services to understand what we need to do different. On the screen, you see a stretch goal for ELA Ford Exam data for grades 3 through 8. On the left-hand side, in orange, is our baseline data established from 2021 Ford results. 39% of students were meeting benchmarks in ELA as measured by the Ford Exam. We developed sub-goals of increasing by 3% to 7% each year to be at 80% by 2029. Based on this progression, we hope to meet the target of 42% by the end of the 21-22 school year. In November, we will be able to share with you the results of the Ford Data. Our goal this year is to be at 45% by the end of the school year. Continuing on with ELA, this slide shows our goals and progress for ACT and ELA for grade 11. On the left-hand side is our baseline established from our 2021 data. Our baseline is at 48% with the goal of being 80% by 2029. Our goal for this school year is to be at 54%. Again, in November, we will be able to share if we met our target of 51% in 21-22. Moving on to math, this is the math stretch goal as measured by the Ford Exam. On the left-hand side, in orange, is our baseline from 2021. We were at 36%, striving to be at 80% by 2029. Our goal for this year is to be at 42%. In November, we will be able to share our progress in math with meeting this target. This is the math stretch goal as measured by the ACT for grade 11. Once again, on the left-hand side, in orange, is our baseline data. Our baseline is at 40%. In November, we will be able to share our progress from last year to see if we are on target of meeting our goal of 46% by the end of this school year. I hope that seeing this data gives you a better understanding of where we are at and where we are hoping to go. To build a further understanding, I want to revisit the ELA data for an example. 39% of students are meeting ELA benchmarks as measured by the Ford Exam in grades 3 through 8 as our baseline. in grades three through eight as our baseline data established from 21-20-2021 school year, which means sixty-one percent of students are in need of something more and different. A healthy system would only have twenty percent needing something more and different, which is very different than sixty-one percent. This by far exceeds the ability for any district to be proactive and responsive in meeting the needs of students. When we strengthen our universal tier, more students will be successful with universal instruction, meaning less students will need tier two and tier three supports. We can then create sustainable systems that will allow for proactive approach instead of being reactive. It's important to understand the system's work will take time and patience to see the impact on student outcome data. We are confident that when we are aligned and coordinated with these strategies, this data will move, and students will have access, opportunity, and success. Next, I will be sharing Eau Claire Area Schools District's disproportionality within special education. It's important to remember, as I go through this information, the gap in our systems and desire to create systems that will allow for proactive approach instead of a reactive approach to responding to students. In 2017, the Eau Claire Area School District was identified by DPI as having a disproportionate overrepresentation in certain areas of special education. All children who require special education services should be appropriately identified and supported. This is our obligation and responsibility as a district. At the same time, no child should be inappropriately identified for special education services. As a district, is identified by meeting criteria for three consecutive years. Due to the sensitive and confidentiality nature of this data, I'm unable to share specific numbers with you, but I will share areas we have been identified and the progress that we are making over the years to address these concerns. In 2017, we were identified in three areas: having an overrepresentation in areas of emotional-behavioral disability of multirace, intellectual disability black, and specific learning disability black. As I go throughout the slide, the asterisk indicates a new identification. With these new identifications, ECSD went through a process with DPI to determine if our evaluation practices were the cause of this disproportionality. From this examination, it was determined our evaluation practices were not the cause of this, and all students that qualified met eligibility and had a need for special education services. From here, ECSD conducted a root cause analysis where we determined we needed to strengthen our universal tier and create systems of support, excuse me, to allow for proactively meeting the needs of every student. As a result, ECSD EMLSSF's EMLS framework was developed. In 2018, we continue to be disproportionate in two areas. 2018 is when we really started to begin implementation of the EMLS. 2019, we continue to have an overrepresentation in the areas of emotional-behavioral disability for multirace and specific learning disability for black, our black students. We also had a new identification. ECSD had a larger amount of disciplinary removals for students that are black and also qualified for special education services as compared to our students that are not. The Special Education Department worked closely with building staff to examine discipline practices and procedures, and we were able to make changes. In 2020, as you can see, ECSD was no longer disproportionate with disciplinary removals. Data showed in the other two identifications that we were making progress. It is important to note that progress with these identifications will take time. Students that were qualified for receiving services in the areas of EBD and SLD still have these needs, and we are obligated through IDA to provide them until they no longer meet eligibility. In 2021, you can see EC received a new identification in the area of discipline. This one was a little more specific to out-of-school suspensions for students that identify by multirace. Once again, the Special Education Department worked closely with building staff to examine discipline practices and procedures to understand what was happening. This brings us to 2022. You can see we're able to adjust our discipline practices and no longer have the identification of out-of-school suspension. We did make progress in no longer identifying the category of an emotional-behavioral disability for multirace. However, we met identification in the same category but for students that are black. Our data continues to show we are making good progress to eliminate that identification in the category of specific learning disability for black students. So in order to move towards our goal of having tier two and tier three support in place at all schools by 2029, we have set goals for the 22-23 school year. This is one of the first steps in aligning resources and services. We will allocate and coordinate high-quality staffing interventions so that building-level supports are in place. We hope to identify intervention resources so that buildings have the supports they needed, and establish data rules and processes for tier two and tier three. Having these in place will create equitable practices across the district. One of the ways we will measure our progress of this is through system assessments. Our goals by the end of 22-23 school year is to increase from seventy-eight to eighty-four percent of schools implementing PBIS tier one to fidelity as measured by the tiered fidelity inventory, and increase from fifty-eight percent to eighty percent of schools implementing PBIS tier two to fidelity as measured by the tiered fidelity inventory. This brings me to our final slide. Hopefully, you're able to see the work of the EMLS and how, when implemented and systems are created, we can change student outcomes for students. Systemic implementation means programs, practices, roles, and expertise are aligned and coordinated into an interdependent whole to ensure every learner benefits equitably from access, opportunity, and support across the school and district. The strategic plan will guide the district's work focusing on the alignment and coordination needed at the district level, along with collaborating with principals, teachers, and support staff. This graphic represents this idea: when our systems are aligned and coordinated, outcomes for students will change. The strategic plan will measure our successes as a district and allow for celebration of the right work and for coordination of continuous improvement. And with that, I'll take questions.
The floor is now open for comments and questions from board members or our student representatives.
Thank you for the presentation. Lot of data there. When you were talking about the baseline data, one of the things that I'm interested in is the progression of that baseline data prior to the one that you've given. So we're at thirty, forty-eight, thirty-six, forty percent. Are we trending down? Are we trending up? What's that data that predates your baselines?
Most of the time, I mean, there was some ups and downs, but for the most part, this data has been flat, which is, and you have seen that data in the past, and having a concentrated effort on changing this data is a shift that we're making. But for many years, our data has remained pretty flat.
Good. So then, that's what I suspected. To achieve that eighty percent, and I'm just going to use myself as an example, as I went through elementary, middle school, high school. At an elementary level, I think that the rigor of my mathematics education probably wasn't where it should have been, which, for me, impacted scores then, all the way down until I got to high school and then kind of caught up. So as you're trending this from a forty percent to an eighty percent, all of that education in the elementary levels has to cycle, and I just wondered, the supports and everything are great, but that base education at the young age, I think, is what really makes the difference to be able to drive these numbers up. And I just wondered how you would comment on that.
We know that this data will, this will take some time, and it will take some time for, especially data like the Ford exam or ACT data. We wanted to specifically share this with you and use it to measure progress of our strategic plan because it does measure the health of our system, which is what we're trying to change. And that begins in elementary, absolutely, and we need to build off of those skills at a very early age. This work, we have been working on as a district for a long time. I think the approach that we're taking right now in teaching and learning is to be very aligned and coordinated so we can get the impact that we need to see the results that you're talking about. But certainly, we know that they are rigorous goals, and we are going to work really hard that we accomplish them.
We continue, just to, that's just to chime in a little bit here. We continue to share the EMLS Teaching and Learning Strategic Plan. We have to, we have to make that public often, not just here to the board in public session, but to our staff, because when we do not have these systems in place, this impacts our operational budget. Because what tends to happen when we don't get the results that we like, well, we just need more people. And especially the Teaching and Learning Department, academic services, basically as an entire system, really getting, especially this year with quite a bit of work with pre-K six, to establish those supports following a pandemic. It is, I've been in different districts before, and Eau Claire was no different. When I, when I ask about history, it's, gee, we're not getting the results we need. Well, we just, we need more staffing. But when we truly find out the root cause analyses, when we look very closely at the data, when our principals share the data with our staff, and when staff take that ownership, and we develop the PED to align to it, we will have better results. There's a reason why Executive Director Van Vliet placed that slide in there. If your universal isn't strong, you have gaps in tier two and tier three. We can't have that as a system, especially a large system such as ours, where it takes quite a bit of work to just move the needle two, three, four, or five percent per year. So, sorry for interrupting the board.
So, I'm not sure, you know, how specifically we, we will, we will watch this, like, outside of seeing perhaps these targets in perhaps, you know, result policy monitoring, or if we'll do this, revisit, you know, this at, you know, a certain interval. But I think, you know, the devil here is in the details, I think, is, you know, you know what I mean? And the, the hard stuff is in the how are these things happening? And I guess where, where my curiosity is and where I want to know more, and perhaps it's, you know, perhaps it's outside the scope of, you know, how we monitor these types of things as board members now, I don't know. So Dr. Johnson can check me as a, you know, in our governance model, but, you know, I think, you know, so my question for rollout of the EMLS is how have, you know, my curiosity is how have staff been involved? How, is there a, is there a specific structure? Is there like a document somewhere that shows, you know, that says this is how staff are involved, and this is how principals are checking in, and this is how we're monitoring, and this is how we're listening to staff to say, okay, here's what we're hearing, we're going to take it back? As you were talking about, I don't remember what you said, you said three things, I only got two of them: practices, resources, and something else. Services, okay. So, you know, how nimble are we? You know, how responsive are we? And how is that structure being created and communicated to staff so that, you know, they feel like they're on the same team? I guess it's a question, you know, but also just like an interesting monitoring thing, so that's one part of it. I think, you know, the other part of it is, I brought it up to Dr. Johnson, Superintendent Johnson, after a visit that I had with a classroom instructor, specific to the curriculum, you know, where are we starting? You know, which curriculum is in the first cycle? And then, you know, what specific work is being done? And it gets the same thing. How are staff being involved? How are we following up with that? You know, I guess it's, that's what I'm talking about more in the details of how we're gonna, how we're gonna see that, and then, you know, we're bringing on, what, how many new staff did we bring on?
Many.
A lot. And so, you know, how, how in the midst of all of this change are those resources being made available to them? You know, so there's, there's a lot of things that I feel like, there's a lot here, a lot to do, and how are we going to keep all, how are we keeping that organized? And how are we really honing in on the, you know, the top-down and bottom-up, and what type of, you know, administrative guidance? And then, what does that system look like? I guess maybe more what I'm curious about, like, how does that actually work in practice?
Well, I would have loved to share with you more specific steps under the five strategies, but there simply wasn't the time, the time that I was given today. But that is the work that we have been doing as a Teaching and Learning Department, is this sometimes is the easy work. We can put this together and establish a goal, but it's what happens after that in being coordinated and aligned so that we can do it at a pace that we have the capacity to deliver and work with our staff. So that's a great question, and we are working very collaboratively to roll that out because we can't do it all in one year. We can't do it all in two years. That's why we developed a seven-year plan. And the things that we made priorities for this school year are the action steps that we believe create those foundational pieces, the work that we need to do ahead of us. So one of the things that you were talking about was how are we collaborating with all of the stakeholders that are involved? If you remember the, and I can click back to it here, why this slide is so important is the bulleted list there is the collaborative structures that need to be in place at all of these levels so that all stakeholders' voices are heard. It's very important that we work as a district office in unison with our building staff. We are not the ones in the classroom and understanding what that looks like and feels like. So we are putting structures in place so that we're collaborating on a regular basis so that we can work together to address the concerns and, obviously, the action steps of our strategic plan. That's our opportunity to understand what they need and adjust and develop a plan moving forward. So this is not easy work, which is why, you know, some of the pieces are missing in our district because it's not easy, and it's not easy to coordinate, and it's really easy to get overwhelmed, which is why we started with, let's set, let's develop an action plan and set some targets to keep our focus.
So I think as a follow-up, if I can, you know, I think that that's where, yeah, I think that's the part that I don't, I don't see or understand entirely. Like, I feel like I've seen the EMLS enough to understand what it's supposed to look like, and I feel like this has become really articulate now, like, how you've, you know, laid, laid out some of the, you know, the focus area, like, how we're going to get there. But I still don't know, you know, if I was in conversation with a teacher or I was in conversation with a parent about these things, I still don't know that I can articulate the how it looks on a day-to-day basis for change in, in the actual practice of teaching, in the collabor, you know, like, and I just, it's just, I'm sure it's just developing right now, but like those, I just don't feel like I got quite a level of understanding of it down, you know, maybe I don't need that level, but that's, you know, so that, maybe that will come out, you know, as you guys are working through the process of like getting it up and going of like, we'll see, like, okay, this is how we did it, this worked really well, this didn't work so well. You know, I think I would be curious to hear more about that, you know, and I think other, other pieces that I'm curious about in this is just how we, how, you know, what is, how is the baseline being set within our schools and our communities and our classrooms for students to get those tiered resources? You know what I mean? Because it can really be left up to individual, you know, is it left up to individual educators? Who is making the call to say, hey, that student, is it just a dated point? Or is it a, is it a subjective observation? You know, like, so I'm curious as to how referrals or how those, how students are getting to access those resources because they feel like in there somewhere, there's the potential for inequity? You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And, and one teacher may say one thing and another staff person may say another. So, you know, how do we step up? And how do we get, you know, kids those resources? I just, I just don't know the how.
Well, the first question, I think, will help this piece here. Now that we have established professional learning through these four different buckets, as we approach anything moving forward as a Teaching and Learning Department, we are thinking through, what is the thinking through, what is the collaboration that is needed to support staff in this work? What is the coaching that is necessarily, necessary to support our teachers? Ensuring that we have a strong mentorship program for our new staff. As you mentioned, there are many new staff, we want to make sure that we're supporting them. And what is the specific professional development and training? So through this process, and you're right, we are just putting these processes, I think we just developed this instructional framework this summer. But moving forward, I do feel like staff will really start to feel these things, but it's just not yet, because we're in the process of developing this. But in that sense, through professional learning, we hope that when you have that conversation with teachers, they can articulate, I went to this training, or during collaboration, we talked about this, or through our, as I was working with my instructional coach, this is the practices that we're working on implementing in our instruction. That's just an, an example. The other piece, if you caught to answer your other question here, and let me click through all this, it'll take a minute. But when you're talking about the data points, and ensuring that we have equitable practices, as I shared, we are looking, as we approach this work, through a lens of equity. This bottom bullet here is establishing data, data rules and processes for Tier 2 and Tier 3. That is so that we have equitable practices across all of our districts. And that it shouldn't matter what school that they're in, a child that has identified as a need should be receiving that support regardless of what school that they're in.
I think that would be interesting for monitoring the equity policy. I think that would be an interesting fact, just note.
Well, part of the reason why we wanted this presentation tonight, we wanted to connect it fairly closely. We know that this month, there are a couple other board meetings, November, the data, the embargo, the embargo is not probably going to be released by November 7th. So we wanted to make sure that the results, so tonight's data and presentation was somewhat of a precursor to R2 when we get together on November 28th. So then we have somewhat that, that baseline data. That's, I mean, that's, that was really the, the premise for having it this evening, to be able to connect it, where we provided some, okay, these were our stretch goals, but then when the data, when the embargo is released, and we're able to talk about that in R2, we can say, when we, you know, these were our goals. And the principals and other directors from our system leaders in the summer data retreat, we can use that internally. But, you know, there was a whole host of communication and agenda items just on this. And going back to the piece about, you know, if you're out speaking to staff members, I would ask them, or to ask principals in August, with these types of presentations, with the instructional framework, and our goals, and the EMLSS, we asked for their feedback. August 29th, we had specific time set aside, hey, did you give feedback to the district Teaching and Learning Department, you know, so that we can alter based on your responses to be more nimble? They had done that. And I can tell you from a district standpoint, I do not get in the classrooms that often, not as much as I'd like to, certainly not as much as the last two years was having a sub during COVID. But what I can say is, every month, when we have our principals' meetings, for example, this Wednesday, I'll be meeting with some members of the executive team, where they plan the principal PD to then, again, support this work. Ask the principals, how are things going in your, you know, how are things going in your building with this? To focus on those goals, to focus on those targets and processes, so that it continues, it's an ongoing, not just, well, we're going to check on it at the beginning of the year, and then we'll check on it at the end of the year. It's a, it's a constant process with our principals' meetings.
Dr. Johnson.
This, this actually was a pretty difficult PowerPoint for me, actually, to kind of, kind of get through. But could you, could you walk me through, so that this, this idea of Tier 1 being, being this 80%? Is, 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 does the 80% effectiveness of Tier 1, does it come from the example of outcomes that you just gave, how individuals are scoring on? Or does the 80% come from determining the effectiveness is actually the, the operational staff that's in place? Because I, I, I would like to know, what does, what does either practices look like? Or what does the combination of operational staff look like in an 80% Tier 1 EMLS system? Because I, 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 I'm just not, I'm not sure, I, I don't, I guess I could have asked for the 2029 data kits, but it, for me, it doesn't really matter, because I just, I'm not sure, without some of those other pieces, 80% is just a number. I'm, I'm still really kind of like, I'm, I'm, I'm just struggling, like, kind of, how we, how, how a district knows that, that 80% happens in Tier 1? So what does it look like, either from a, from a, an operational staffing delivery standpoint, or is it, which measures, which outcomes are you utilizing to potentially? So you gave us that example, we're currently only at 39% of ELA benchmarks, right? And so, in seven years, 41% is a huge kind of like jump, or it, it, it's kind of like unrealistic, I think, if you think about like potentially learning behaviors, and, and especially if we hadn't identified kind of what's really the effectiveness. So that, that's the piece. The other, the other thing that I, like the cautionary tale, and this is kind of, I, I've been here since, well, too long, in, in, in Eau Claire, but one of the, one of the, one of the things that gets me, so the disproportionality in special education, I, do, do we know, even though I guess the comment was made, that, you know, when we look at the, the percentage of African Americans, it is, you know, we, we take the percentage of African American students in a district, and that over-representation in special education, especially actually for, for, for males? What, what do we know about that particular referral process, and the, the level of interventions being done prior to, prior to referral? You know, because historically, in, 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 in data, you know, other types of kids are potentially given, especially when we think about the, that emotional behavior realm, of that students of other races potentially get a little bit more leeway than actually those African American kids, right? So, do we, do we have information about like kind of what we do in our particular district from that referrals? Like, so how many, how many observations, what other types of interventions were utilized prior to moving towards that referral process? And, and, and if so, are the, are the, are there differences taking place with those identified in this particular table? Which is not, because I, I'll be honest, as a, as a parent of two biracial children, one, one male, it was heightened as soon as my kids actually entered this particular district, that whether it be from behavioral standpoint, or anything, that we would actually have this conversation, and given my, what I do professionally, this, this is just a little bit, like, for me, is there has to be, there has to be something else, and that, that will allow us to, because what stands out, you know, African American kids, there is something in our particular district that's, that's, that's not working. And what is not working? Is it, is it, is it the referral piece? Is it, and maybe it's this, it's a Tier 1 piece, right? And so, yeah, could you, I, I'm just curious, what else, what, what, what else is there that we're examining to address, kind of like this disproportionality piece? Because if, if, if we decreased, we got rid of out-of-school suspension, so that came off in 2021. But did out-of-school suspensions potentially lead to more of those particular students identified as emotional behavior? I'd rather actually see them probably have, just still be out-of-school suspension, instead of actually being placed in a, a special education if they need to be there. And so I, I'm, yeah, and I, I told myself, and I broke my own rule not to actually say anything tonight, actually, on this particular slide, but I, we, we just have to have just a little bit, could you just tell me just where we are in terms of just, like, a little bit more?
Sure. I, I will start with your first question, the 80% in the healthy system. So, the 80% comes a response from a response-to-intervention model that we use in education. So, a healthy system, or even a 80-20, with that 80% being successful, that is really what a district can, given the likely dollars that a district has, that they can implement a sustainable system. When it's more than that, it does put pressure on our system. So if you look at that, actually, the example that I have on the screen, for us to meet the needs of 61% of students needing something more and different, that is a lot of interventionists, and a lot of interventions that are needed, we can't sustain that model. So when we move towards meeting 80%, that is implementing a system that we can sustain as a district. A big piece of that, and I'm going to click through a couple slides here, is one of the Tier 3 supports here, I mean, there's selective interventions that we want to have in place, either academic, or ones that support social and emotional supports. At Tier 3, they get even more intensive, and this is where I would say comes our partnerships with the community. Tier 3 interventions can be intensive, and we want to almost provide wraparound services for some of our students. We are not at this point where we're providing this to fidelity. That's why it's so important that a school district works in collaboration with their community, because the, some of the students that need these Tier 3 interventions are above and beyond what we can provide within the walls of our school. So as we work to strive to 80%, 5 to 15%, and then 1 to 5, that is through the lens of a sustainable system that a district can create within the dollars that they have. So I hope that gave you a little insight to that question that you had there. And then also to answer your questions, as far as the disproportionality data, these are the interventions that we would want to be providing a student, let's just use our disproportionality data as an example. So a student that is exhibiting behaviors, we want to be able to give them interventions that support whatever skill deficit that they are having. When we are not having these supports in place at a school, it taxes our resources that we do have, it taxes the staff that are available, whether it's the classroom teacher, our counselors, if we do have interventions in that school, the principal, they are doing the best that they can to provide that student with what they need. We have the obligation to provide Tier 3 supports, but again, some of these students' needs are pretty exceptional, and require services that go beyond the walls of what we can provide in, within the walls of a school system. So one of the challenges with, for example, emotional behavioral disability, when they qualify, they have to meet eligibility in two of three areas. So one is always the school environment, and then either home or community. So when they do, perhaps those presenting needs, and they need those additional supports, and we need to sustain them, and they, they need them, they've established that they need those supports to be successful at school, and they also have some challenges either at the home or community. As we work with those families, that's challenging, because we can, we can control what we can within the walls of our school. And that's why these Tier 3 supports, those wraparound supports, and working with families to assist them, depending on what the situation is, or what the student is experiencing, it could be mental health, it could be trauma, you know, just depending on what it is, trying to get that student what they need, so that they can be successful with the school environment. So it is, it is challenging. But again, as I move to here, this is why we are trying to implement Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports, so that there are those guaranteed supports in place, so that we can be proactive with those students that haven't qualified yet. So if we are able to catch them, and give them the skill instruction, or perhaps mental, mental health therapy, or whatever, depending on what it is that they need, that it doesn't end in a qualification for special education.
So just a follow-up, so if I, if I heard you correctly, though, apparently, as we're looking through this, at each, at each school, Tier 2s are not, not consistently available or available to their full extent?
Correct.
Do we, do we have, we have numbers, right? Where, which schools potentially are, are there, are getting close versus those or not? We, we, we could potentially identify.
That is our system assessment data that we shared with the tiered fidelity inventory that helps us understand where we're at with what schools have implementation. In particular, for talking about emotional behavioral disability, we'd be looking at our PBIS system, and that measures whether or not PBIS, which is the, you know, what can be these interventions, are they in place, Tier 2 interventions and Tier 3? So if you remember, I can, should have really thought through these slides, so I could easily flip back and forth, but I'll click here again. Right here, so this is our goal in implementing these systems to support that. So we hope that 78% to 84%, and this is just by the end of this school year. You would have seen a different measure connected to R3 two weeks ago, because that was within two years. So this is what we hope to accomplish by the end of this year, is that 84% of schools have Tier 1 implemented to fidelity. And the way that PBIS works is you have to build off of the year before. So you really can't, it's difficult to work on Tier 2 if you don't have Tier 1 implemented first. So that's why you see two measures here. And then for Tier 2, we want to get to 80% of schools having Tier 2 to fidelity. And then, when we meet that goal, we will move on to Tier 3, add Tier 3 in their supports as well.
Because the, the reason I ask, is if, if, if we have, if we have those numbers, one, potentially in terms of a story, i- is it possible this disproportionality that's actually taking place? Is it taking place at those schools that are actually with the low fidelity in Tier 2? Or, or, or is this, or is this still, is it still potentially like a universal issue across the school? I, 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 I'm just, so, it's just something to think about, I, I, so I appreciate it, and like I broke another, one of my rules, actually, my apologies, I'm going to do better, I don't know what I'll reflect on at the end.
Just to comment on that, that is data that the Special Education Department looks at to understand what this data means, and what it, what the Special Education Department can do to support buildings, if that is the case. You know, sometimes the challenge, these students move through our system. So the students, when we go back to the identification in 2017, you know, this many years later, those students are, are likely going to continue to meet eligibility as they go throughout our system. So they move through the different levels, and, but that is things that, those are things that we look at, and, and see how we can support a school if there is a, you know, particular concern for a school.
Dr. Scher.
Can I just say one thing? I think, and this is probably more for Superintendent Johnson, but these presentations are, are really enlightening, in, in a sense that I, I want artifacts from some of this work in our monitoring reports. You know what I mean? Like, as these things are developed, and we are coming up with that guidance, and we're, we're starting to see the date, the disproportionality data, as far as like, you know, I, I would be really curious to see, like, a before and after of the curriculum work, right? I want to see what it looked like before, in our, you know, SharePoint, whatever, where it's sitting, and what it's going to look like after it is completed, if we're starting with science, or math, or social studies, or whatever we're starting with. I think that, that starting to see some artifacts from the EMLSS work, from these strategic plans, you know, planning steps that you guys are taking, I think that would be really interesting, because I think it, it sort of gives a framework around, this, this is a great narrative around what could be artifacts that support board policy. So I, I would, you know, we don't have time to dig into artifacts here, but perhaps those could start to feed some of our monitoring reports.
You definitely will see them, but yeah, should that work.
Great, thanks.
Dr. Frar.
So, thank you for the presentation. So, I think that what we see here is a recognition that the district needs to make serious structural changes, right? And I, I appreciate that recognition, and I definitely agree that that's, that's a path we are, are. we are belatedly embarking on, right? It's something that we need to do. I'd like to learn more about ways in which we're identifying things that are working and as teachers who are having impressive results with their students and perhaps collaborative groups of teachers and certain campuses among our schools where we're seeing improvements. And I'd like to learn more about how we are, this model is able to leverage what teachers are figuring out works at the classroom level and how that's also being communicated. So in other words, I understand that when you make structural change, that that occurs through a process of leadership and implementation. At the same time, I'm reluctant to embrace an entirely top-down model of that process, because teachers are the ones who have to do this work in the end, and they're the ones who are face-to-face with students, and they're the ones who are implementing a curriculum and learning in the process of teaching students where there are problems with the curriculum or problems with instructional design. And so I think I'll just stop there first, and I might have more questions, but I'd like to stop so I don't give you a whole list of things.
Well, I think I would, you know, maybe comment on the top-down piece. I, we are very conscious of not having that top-down feeling. When we are putting collaborative structures in place, we're doing the curriculum work, we're doing the instructional framework, we're reaching out to teachers to understand what they need. We're not doing that in isolation as a teaching and learning department. We're doing that in collaboration with teachers. So for example, the instructional framework that we did this summer, there were over, all teachers were invited to participate in that work, and we had a group of over sixty staff members participate in that. And the work that we are doing to rewrite curriculum, that is done by teachers. Teaching and Learning Department, our Directors of Academic Services, they facilitate the process, but they don't, the teachers are the ones that are doing the work, because they're the ones in the classroom. Working with our coaches, they are going back and working with teachers and coming back, and we're trying, we're understanding what they need. So I feel like there, those are changes that we're putting in place because we don't want that top-down feel or process in our district. And we value the people that are in our building, and we value the voice of the teachers to understand what it is and the direction that we need to go.
Thank you. I will just say, it's striking, right? This number that sixty-one percent of our students are needing something different than what we're currently providing. It's a startling number. And I understand that part of making progress is to understand where you are. And so, you know, I'm all for recognizing that opportunity for growth, but it is a startling number.
It is. Which is, I think, is why we feel so passionate about this work and the need to be very focused and intentional, because it is very concerning. Certainly recognize that eighty percent is a very rigorous goal, but we feel that our students deserve that.
Yeah, it makes me think of the Wisconsin State Constitution and the fact that it outlines, you know, a responsibility of the state to provide a good education to every student in the state. And, you know, and we have a referendum coming up, and we're asking our community to support us. And I think that our community supports education. But it does give me pause, this sixty-one percent of students. And it makes me wonder about how we compare to other districts around the state. Do we have any ways of comparing a sort of apples-to-apples comparison along these lines?
Yep, using Forward and ACT data, we can share that information with you.
I think that if this is like, and I'm going to guess that it is a common situation across the state, I think that's something that our legislature should hear about in their responsibility to our students. Stop there. Thank you. Do you have ideas from this presentation, just as students?
Thank you, Manny, for the presentation. I appreciate that we are setting specific goals that we can measure against. I'm wishing for that, and I'm glad to see it. I do think it's, it's aggressive, but I'd rather miss an aggressive goal than either not have them or set them too low. So, yeah, I do look forward in November and in December as well as we get into, towards to see how we've stacked up, at least in that first, once the embargo has ended. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will now move on to our monitoring for this meeting. We have on our agenda OE3 climate commitment. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. I've got some guests this evening, if they're, as soon as they go through the summary, we can certainly take questions. First off, I have Jeff Nestor and Joel Dimmick have been helping me with this OE3 as well as Kim Kohler. Kim's obviously available in the back. But first off, a little bit different from, I'm not going to read the summary from 3.1 to 3.6, but there are a couple of things that I wanted the board to know, especially in preparation for the board workshop or future board workshops where we're able to alter the policy. When we go through this and we, you know, one year ago today, or one year ago this month, with this OE3, it's, we learned quite a bit throughout the course of the year with other OEs. So what I wanted to do was shift, not to edit the policies, but rather to shift them from one to, for example, part of 3.2 is shifted up to 3.1 to make it a little bit easier overall and descriptive. And then so 3.2 can stand on its own. So that's kind of the first part. So then 3.2 through 3.5 are really focusing on our biodiversity, emissions, transportation, waste and recycling. So that's, you know, that's the meat of it with 3.2 through 3.5 with those pieces. And again, and you've heard me say this in the past, but it's part of our Energy Committee is to really focus on what the city is doing and what XL Energy is doing, because we hear from them quite often, excellent partners, Ned Noel and Julie Thoney from the city and from XL Energy. We are XL's customers. Our goals at the city level should be your goals, Mr. Johnson, in the Eau Claire area school district. So Jeff and Joel have heard me speak about that quite often. But compliance with exceptions for the summary, however, I wanted to share 3.1 and 3.6 are very similar. And 3.1 deals with the plan itself, and 3.6 deals with the overall annual report. While it's similar in nature to our Equity OE2 last month that we had done, not quite there to that point yet in terms of plan and review to then post by, let's say, November 1st, 2022. So when there is a non-compliance, like I've shared with our committee, I've shared with others, and we know here at the board level, there's non-compliance, what's the date it's going to be done? Because we don't just say, well, it's non-compliant, go ahead for the next year. What I wanted to share is that from OE3.1 and 3.2 is that the superintendent is not compliant with the deadline of six months of adoption of that draft plan for the climate goals. As part of the climate commitment annual report is shared with the board and draft forum. I provided that to the board earlier. I did not want to post that in public until it is completed, where we've had our Energy Committee an opportunity to see it, which they had done Thursday, this past Thursday, and then our second meeting in October, I believe it's the 27th. And the Energy Committee was comfortable with that as well, much like the Equity Steering Committee was able to take a look at that Equity annual report and to be able to give some solid feedback. So from 3.1 and 3.6, the superintendent is not compliant with these things. However, that will be completed by November 1st, 2022. Going on to the next indicator, OE2 biodiversity, we're compliant with exceptions. Monitoring evaluation and improvement of those, the CO2 levels in the buildings continues. Jeff was able to share a little bit beforehand. He can share this evening, too. In talking with our Energy Committee, as well as summer meetings over the past, we tried to get a consultant, we tried to get interns to assist us in that. Very difficult to get that just internally. So we had asked the university, Jim Bolter has been a fantastic resource, look for interns in the last winter, look for interns in the spring, just unable to do so. We may have to consult for that. But again, 3.2 is critical, because with an impending referendum, it would be fantastic for us to be able to address that. For number three, for the emissions subcategory, compliant with exceptions, participating in energy efficiency programs, listed a few for the evidence. Look at other districts around the state. For example, Oregon School District here in the state, connecting with our CISA. Again, using some dollars, some funding with some of our, I guess, with some of the evidence there to improving our infrastructure at Longfellow, Northwoods, North Star for that first indicator. But again, continue to promote this awareness, but also share it and learn from our students. We have new staff members this year on our Energy Committee. We're able to understand a little bit more across our curricula where that is mentioned. Our partnerships with CVTC will continue our grant opportunities in the next round. So that's a bit for 3.3. For 3.4 with transportation, again, and I asked, I believe it was 3.1 to, to, I'm sorry, no, it was to eliminate the indicator where student transit was part of the committee. That's a given now. They're part of the committee, I feel we should take that indicator off. With Jim Fai and with student transit, and also with the help of Mr. Nestor, very strong, specific compliance with four of the five indicators. Our participation in safe routes to school is critical. Others are listed there as well. Quite a bit of text right there. We can scroll down a little bit, Terry. Board permission to edit the indicator number two. Not just new school construction, because that's not going to occur for a while. The last time we had a school constructed was Flint, celebrating its twentieth anniversary. We wanted to put on major renovation, because then if the referendum passes in November, then we can honor this indicator, because there are opportunities for us. The fleet feasibility, Mr. Nestor had taken care of that back in 2021. In November, I think we presented that evening, and it was back in October, and it was the next month. So anyway, indicator four was compliant, and my permission to the board to delete the fifth indicator just because we know, and Mr. Fai knows, as does student transit, with transportation, it's critical. If we were to move on to 3.5, the waste and recycling, got some good feedback from our Energy Committee with the data on it, as well as with 3.3. So we're going to alter some things with our annual report, alter some things with our plans. But, you know, strong compliance with indicators on food waste, waste collection, baseline data had been identified thanks to Jeff and others for sharing that data. But also, from a history perspective, that was very, very impactful, too. The recycling tonnage to increase, the goal of increase that by three percent, reducing the tonnage for waste by three percent in that same timeframe, that's our goal for this next year. Electronic lifestyle indicator, an impact of very strong in 3.5. Revenue generation was one of the goals and really nailed that with this past year, $107,000. Thanks to James Martin for getting that data for us for indicator number two. If we were to scroll down a bit more with our participation in those programs. The food waste, again, compliant, and waste collection programs. Jeff could articulate that a bit more if there are questions. But that's where we are, especially the meat of it from two to five, 3.2 to 3.5. But as I said, from 3.1 and 3.6, that is truly my responsibility. I was not compliant with it November 1st, 2022. We will have compliance. Thanks for the time, and we can definitely take questions right now. Jeff and Joel, if you'd like to approach, that'd be great.
Thank you. Questions and comments from board members or our student representatives?
Mr. Alliance?
Great presentation and a lot of good information in here. The green cleaning policy, also the recycling, good. You've got a comment in there, then a consultant may be needed to assist in the measurement and the achievement of these goals. And I would encourage you to really go after a consultant, interns, and folks that will audit energy are wonderful. But there are companies out there that will, at no or very little cost, will benchmark your utility spend to what it could be, and will find the delta of that spend versus where it ought to be, and it will generate a savings. And then they will go in and they will actually look at your infrastructures, your air handling, and all of the vestibules, the things like the LED lights and the insulation. And they'll figure out what an investment would be. And for this, a climate commitment, I think it has the double benefit of helping reduce carbon emissions, but also having a financial output that will pay for these things. If you get that kind of consultant that can come in and lay out what savings would be extracted from changing air handlers to a zone heating, cooling, thing like that. So I know that you probably have all of this in the back of your mind already, Jeff, but I was wondering, you know, there's a couple of companies out there, and I know a little bit about it, because I did it in a past life. And I was wondering if maybe there was any thoughts on moving this direction.
That would be why I made that comment. When we put that comment in there is because we need to come up with a baseline and to give us an action plan or some, set some goals. But we have to be not only fiscally responsible, but we have to be environmentally responsible also. So seeking guidance from some people that have done this before and that allow us to be able to not only save money, but also to reduce our carbon emissions is exactly what I believe that the direction that we need to go with this.
I think another thing that we want to delve a little bit more deeply in is regarding the electric, the natural gas usage, and especially with the work that's been done, was it two or three years ago, with some deferred maintenance and referendum work, where I put the With some deferred maintenance and referendum work where I I put the examples of Flynn and DeLong and North, for example. To check out, you know, some energy savings. We did it across the twenty one, we did it across twenty one buildings. Because the data was from, I believe it was from eighteen nineteen was not accurate. There was one one school from the electric that there was not any data. And then for a different school for the natural gas. But on the electric sixteen out of twenty one had improved. And improved significantly. And then. I think with the natural gas, it was thirteen out of twenty one or fourteen out of twenty one. But to identify which ones that we had, you know, some of our older buildings with some. Window replacements and things, but that's just one of the things that, you know, Jeff and Joel and I had spoken about. To go a little bit, a little bit further in this when we place that into the annual report. That's one, one of the feedback. A piece of feedback that we had gotten from our energy energy committee. Again, with student representation, I think we had three students. And that had come from one of the students as well as a couple of folks from city council. So. Wanted to add to that. That's great, but.
Yeah, so like we've we've done some using S R two and S R three funds to be able to upgrade some of our infrastructure spoilers, controlled networks. Those type of things and and it'll be interesting to see, and I'm looking forward to seeing how that. Improved our energy use over time here. Especially after this year, because we've done a lot of that work in the last past summer. And just previously before that, just a little bit like a year ago. So. Next year, being able to measure that and determine what that exact impact had for not only. Not only for energy use, but also for our carbon footprint.
So I I appreciate the the report. It's good to see that there are some steps of progress. You know, it's obviously, you know, Excel doing a lot of their work for, you know, aligns with our goals. And so it's great to see them moving forward because that not only benefits us, but the city. You know, probably everywhere that Excel is, I think. The only thing that I want to just mention to my colleagues is I think I'm gonna make a motion when we get there to strike the. Policy edits that are in there, because I'd like to visit them in a policy workshop rather than having them changed right here. I don't necessarily disagree with them in theory, but it was sort of like the other day when we had. When Dr. Johnson, when you had said, I don't want to put that on a consent agenda right away. Because it's built in here into some of the proposed edits. I don't feel comfortable having those personally in there to change that policy without having us just look at it. At a at a work session or having a chance to to change our policy out there. So I am gonna forward a motion to just. Strike those two edits. That's the one in OE three, one and OE three, two. And we can consider them, you know, we're still planning right now for October seventeenth to have a policy workshop. We can put that on the agenda as well. I mean, get there. I look forward to seeing that first report, especially and then, you know, with with the consulting, you know, to get those, get those goals up. So we can really start to see our moves. And of course, we're hopeful for a. You know, following a successful referendum, I'm hopefully to see some of those sustainability measures that we're gonna be putting in on that new construction. So I do, I also appreciate adding the major renovations piece to that indicator, because that's an important way that we can. Add to buildings that we already have in place. So not seeing any other calls for the floor, I guess at this time I would hear a motion to approve the. OE three monitoring report. Right, then.
Would you need a an amendment to take out the edits or?
Yes, I motion. This is the clean motion. So I, so we've we've moved in second and we're on to discussion on the motion at this time. I will move to amend the report to strike the two policy change suggestions. That are in red in OE three point one and OE three point two. So again, just by way of discussion on the amendment, it's not that I necessarily have any problem with considering that language. But I don't want to do it just in one shot when this is when we have just seen it. I want to bring it. To the work policy work session and then have a chance for us to, you know, change our policy on our own. So I just want it out of there and we'll take that and Terry, if you would just add like specifically those pieces of text to our list as we develop, that would be helpful. I mean, again, assuming that this, if this were not to pass, then it's just there and we'll go forward with that. Any other discussion on the amendment? Question? Sure. I was gonna, I was just making sure that there wasn't any other discussion. Hearing none. So then. The question is whether to amend to strike the. Policy changes in OE three point one and three point two suggestions. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? The amendment passes, so we will return to the motion to approve OE three as amended. Discussion on that motion. Hearing none, I'll call the question as well to approve OE three as amended. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes OE three is approved as amended. Pusher Lyons, if you could. Summarize for us any of our notes. I know we didn't have a ton of discussion on this one, which is probably positive. On the note taking anyway.
Need for a consultant. Green cleaning policy. I wrote mine down. I'll have to recapture these chair.
I think, I mean, I think that really you were the one and I will make sure I I note to the amendment that we made in the summary statement. But again, it's it was more procedural than it was content wise. Is there anything else the board members want to make sure it gets noted for the summary statement? Okay. Well, then move on to our final action item of the night, and that is the preliminary twenty twenty two, twenty three budget adoption. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Abby Johnson, of course Superintendent Johnson for that presentation. This is in preparation, of course, and is necessary for us to hold our annual budget adoption meeting. Be five thirty P M, October twenty fourth.
Good question, Erin Ardine. So we always have an opportunity at the preliminary budget adoption to review our ending of the previous year from twenty one, twenty two. So we'll do that first. And so we really dive into the operating revenue. And so. For some of you that are new, we have three funds that are kind of our operating funds. And so we talk a lot about the general fund, the special education fund. And then Head Start or other grant funds, which the bulk of it is Head Start. So that's why when you see operating revenue, I have three funds listed because that's how we have to count for them in compliance with DPI rules. So you can see that overall, our operating revenues did change from the twenty one, twenty two adopted budget to the revised budget. And then compared to the unaudited actual, the audit is still in progress. We won't get our final reports until December. So you can see that there were some changes between the adopted and the revised, mostly due to funds that we received that we were not expecting. So there were some additional funds that were provided by Governor Evers office as well as the ECF funds, which were emergency connectivity funds. And so those were things that we did not know about and didn't know what that would look like when we adopted the budget. And so in the end, we received about one point seven million dollars more in revenue than what we were expecting to receive. If we look at operating expenses, kind of breaking it down by category. Again, you can see the adopted was a hundred and seventy two point seven million, the revised was a hundred and seventy five. And our unaudited actuals were one seventy seven. Some of the differences that you will notice between the adopted and revised are due to additional grants that we got during the year. And so we always make adjustments and the board approves them through the consent agenda. So this is the culmination of the rest of that year's report. So you can see that our overall, our expenses were about one point six million dollars more than what we were expecting them to be. We like to talk about our fund balance and where we've been and what's important to us. And so you can see since twenty sixteen, we have had a little bit of growth in our fund balance. Obviously, twenty nineteen, we had a lot of growth and that was due to COVID and shutting down. And then last year, we also had a little bit of growth as well. So as I will show you. And as we talked about, we did have a surplus in the twenty one, twenty two school year of about one point five million dollars. So you might be wondering, well, why did our fund balance go up, but that percentage is going down? Well, our Fund Ten expenditures also went up, and so they went up more than what that. Surplus was. And so that's why you see the decrease in the percentage, because the auditors always recommend us to have our fund balance between twenty eight and thirty three percent. And they look strictly at Fund Ten expenditures. And so that's why, even though we had a surplus, that number went down by one percent. So we're still very close to the range that the auditor wants us to be in. And I can say that when we talk with the auditors and they share their reports as well. Not a lot of school districts are actually falling in that range. And so that's their recommended range. But it is also very common that school districts fall outside. We don't like to get lower because of the fact it does impact our debt rating and our bond ratings. So when we go to issue debt, you know, that can hurt us in the interest rates. As well as just showing that we are in a financially good spot. We've also had not had the cash flow barrel for the last couple of years, and that's also a sign of a stronger fund balance. And that we have the cash needed to pay those bills as we need them. So just some of the other funds we like to highlight at this time. So debt service, again, this would be tax levy versus tax payments, debt payments. The difference is interest income that was earned on those funds. So we don't budget for that because it fluctuates so much. So that's why there's a difference there. Food service, food service was significantly different last year than what we had thought it would be. Mostly because we got some more revenue from the state that we weren't expecting. So and in addition, the reimbursement rates were based upon the national summer school lunch program instead of the school year lunch program. So that reimbursement rate was higher. So overall, there was more revenue that we were anticipating with our food service. And if you remember, food service is like a standalone business. And so whatever revenues they bring in, they try to keep their expenses very similar to that as well. So they had a nice buffer fund balance last year as well. Our OPEP trust fund, again, we've had that for several years and that's where we account for our retiree benefits. And so you can see that our revenue was very close to what we planned it to be. And our expenses were a little bit different than what we expected, probably had some people retire that weren't in our original calculation. Those are the actual costs that we pay to the H R A accounts based upon the retirees and what the liability is that we owe them. When we look at our community service fund, that's Fund Eighty, a lot of our school resource. Officers will fall into there, our middle school athletic program, Special Olympics. So we had some more expenses. We started a new program with the county in that I think we had one month of that in last year. So that accounts for some of that expense difference as well. So overall, about a forty five thousand dollar difference in Fund Eighty. When we look at our budget review, kind of again, where we, when we put them all together. We were about a hundred and one thousand dollars difference between what our revised budget was and our ending actual was. Our goal is always to be within one percent of our budget either way when we get to the end. So you can see that we were actually even better. We are much closer than that one percent, only being off a hundred and one thousand net between all of them. So fast forward into twenty two, twenty three and tonight, you will be asked to adopt the preliminary budget for this fiscal year. So we look at revenue by fund and so we have the general, the special education and the other projects. Again, that's our operating funds. That's why they're shaded in a darker blue. So you know, those are the funds that we added together. We do take out the general fund transfer for special ed. If you remember. Part of that general tax levy that we have has to offset the additional costs of special ed that we don't get aided on from the state. You can see our debt service funds are in the thirties and then you can see our food service fund, our employee benefit trust fund, as well as our community service fund. When we break it down in kind of a pie chart, you know, what you would expect is that Fund Ten is the biggest part of our pie. And so you can see that's eighty point eight percent of our budget in our special ed, which is the next largest fund is about five percent of that. And then Fund Twenty Nine is just a tiny little sliver there as far as the operating funds go. So we like to share that just to show here's where our revenues are coming in and where they're generated at. We fast forward and look at the expenses by fund. Again, the three darker blue ones are operating fund and I have a better summary in just a couple of slides for you. You can see our debt service fund, that is our principal and interest payments on the debt that has been previously issued. Capital projects fund, we don't have any revenue in that fund because that is funds that are still remaining from the twenty sixteen referendum. So we recognized all the revenue when we issued the debt and we still have a little bit of funds that are available to use. In there and we do have plans for that and that's included in the budget for twenty two, twenty three. Food service expenses, obviously our employee benefit trust fund expenses and our community service fund as well. Again, when we want to look at it just kind of as part of a pie. You know, that's you start to see a difference in Fund Ten expenses because there is a nineteen million dollar transfer for sped. And so that's why you see Fund Twenty Seven, that percentage grow. When you add them all together, it doesn't look so different, but because that's considered operating expenses, we like to again, show that picture of. How that breakdown happens. So when we look at the operating expenses, we look at, we like to compare, you know, what was our unaudited actual from twenty one, twenty two? What's the preliminary budget that the school board is being asked to adopt and what's those differences? So you can see our revenue budget is about eight point six million dollars more than what our last year's unaudited actuals were. Again, some additional revenue that when we put everything together is planned in those areas. And then expenses, again, you can see expenses are up about eleven million dollars. That's about a six and a half percent increase from previous year. Shouldn't be any surprises based upon decisions that we made, you know, in the winter with some of those expenses. So you can see last year we had a surplus of one point five million. This adopted early preliminary budget is projecting a one point five million dollar deficit, kind of offset. That increase that we had from twenty one, twenty two. So it is a three million dollar swing between the two years. When we look at our tax levy, we look at it by fund, but we also look at it by total. So one of the things and the things that we talk about a lot is trying to keep the tax levy flat for our taxpayers. We don't want them to feel the impacts of the up and the downs related to our levy. And so the equalized value number is changing. A lot of that has to do with the fact of our equalized eight, our equalized value of property. Had a significant change. We don't have the final number yet. That doesn't come out until. Oh, maybe it came out today. I may have missed it on an email or it comes out on October fifteenth. But that's one of the pieces that will get certified to us from DPI on October fifteenth. So there's not a lot that we can do about that. Our goal is to, again, keep that tax levy dollar amount flat. So what you can see, our recommendation is, is that our tax levy would be twenty one thousand dollars more than what it was in the twenty two levy year. So things that happened between now and October twenty fourth, we will continue our budget reconciliation. We have some follow up items on our end. Be able to articulate and summarize for you the how do we plan to use S R two and S R three funds in this twenty two, twenty three year. Our third Friday student count has been submitted, but we're waiting for DPI to certify that to us. Our state aid will be certified, our computer aid, our tax levy, our transportation expense and open enrollment. All of those things happen when we get our certification on October fifteenth with maybe the fourteenth this year, it might be the seventeenth. We haven't received definite. We just know that the fifteenth is on a Saturday, so it will likely be before or after. So with all of those things, our adopted budget will look different because we need those things. And in my projections, I've I've put flat enrollment. And so once we see how everything comes out, you know, enrollment could change there. As well as some open enrollment things that are being finalized right now with DPI as well. So all of that kind of comes together and then I will articulate those changes for you on October twenty fourth. When we come forward to adopt the official twenty two, twenty three budget. So with that, what questions do you have for me tonight?
So thank you, Abby. I know it's always our goal to be within one percent. And, you know, I will say that in like, we have seen in previous years where we have been outside the one percent in the initial budget. been outside the 1% in the initial budget, and we've always tightened it back up. So I, I'm really happy to see how close we are at the initial right now. I'm also optimistic that we'll actually have a little bit of a bump in our enrollment this year. I know that we'll, we'll find that out on the 14th or the 17th or the 23rd, whenever the state gets around to it, hopefully close to their, their date. But I, I'm glad that we're, that we're so close here. Obviously, it would be, you know, but I, it always tightens up and gets closer once we have those numbers. But I think this is a, this is a good start. Comments and questions from other board members? Commissioner Lyons, leading the way tonight.
All right. So the year-over-year revenue, your budgeting is flat, but enrollment is up.
When I do the preliminary budget, I always budget flat. So that way then we don't, if we have more students, then we get more revenue. If we have less students, we can't go less than that because we have the declining enrollment exemption. So it's safer and most conservative to budget flat.
Okay. Our, our, our role in approving the budget. If I know that we're approving a conservative budget, then at the end of the year, you ought to have a balance that's way beyond 1% because you're budgeting very conservatively. So I just wonder sometimes what our, what this approval of the budget is. For me to really understand as a board member what's going on, I need prior year's budget, prior year's actual, and the current year budget. So I can see in a prior year what we were budgeting, in that prior year, what we spent, and then how we adjusted in this year to account for that. That gives me a lot, you know, I, I noted that capital, I think you spent about 1.6 over the budget. That makes sense to me because Esser money was in there, right? Yeah. That, that all makes perfect sense to me. In, in a world where the Esser money isn't there, that 1.6 would have come from somewhere. And so then I'm looking in some of the other line items for where it was underspent, and I noticed that a special ed was underspent. So the, the question then is kind of like, why? So for a board member, if, if I could get some of that in, in the documents that are coming out, the, the prior year budget, the prior year actual, and then the, the coming year proposed budget, I, I just would feel better because it's all, you know, at the end of the day, what's our revenue and all our expenses that are budgeted, be able to fit nice, tidy package?
Commissioner. I kind of asked a question, Superintendent Johnson about this. And I, I just wonder, and this is just very, I cannot speak as articulately, I can't about budget, but I'm concerned about inflation and about how we are accounting for that. I'm concerned about, you know, inflated values potentially, you know, I think probably as, as it pertains to our levy, like, have, have you had any? Has there been any talk at the state level or at any, at any point in budgeting about how we should be thinking about what would happen if property values were to come back? If there were to be an adjustment, right? How would we, how would we account for that? Like, you know, what would that look like or how would that work?
Right. So I think really how that would work is that, you know, on October 15th, we get a certification from DPI that says, here's your, here's your assessed rate, value. And then that just goes into the revenue limit formula, and it comes out down here, you know, where the total tax levy and the per thousand dollars of equalized property value, because as that number gets bigger and our levy stays the same, that, that value goes down. So typically, when we're budgeting and doing budget projections, we're very conservative. Like, in most of my projections, I've been using 2% to 3% because 2% to 3% growth is considered normal, and we look historically. Now, if it drops to 1%, then we're going to probably want to budget in our forecast and looking forward at a 1%. I never, I didn't plan on an 11. I think we were at 11% ish.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but yeah, so every year, like when I'm building the budget, I don't, I don't plan on 11% every year. I usually typically will look at what is the last few years done.
But what you said about the 1% thing, so then you, we would adjust maybe until that seemed to level out from there on. I'm just, I'm just concerned about that of, of like, I don't want to get caught with like, you know?
Right, right. And I think too, the other thing to think about is that's just the revenue piece that doesn't impact our expense piece. So on the expense piece, when you're talking about inflation and things like that, we do a really, we try really hard to know what are those big purchases going to be and what, you know, what do we think it's going to cost? And a lot of teams are actually getting some of that information. Like, if we talk about capital, we've done the work for capital improvements because remember, you usually approve that in November because we have to get it out for bid. So those are actual costs. And some of the other large purchases that we need to make, we find out or we do the work and have a very good estimate and close, especially on those really large ones, because it can swing your budget, right? It can make a huge impact. If you were planning on purchasing something that was $500 and all of a sudden it's $1,000, that's double of what you were expecting. So our budget is our plan, and we adopt what we think is going to happen. We know that there's lots of changes throughout the year. So we try to do our best, but we're also monitoring very carefully every month. And as budget authority, myself, actually you even look at the board reports every month to kind of see where is that spending at as well. So, you know, I think there's a lot of us that are monitoring it, and sometimes we have to say, eh, we can't, we can't make that purchase because it just doesn't fit into our budget, or we need to scale it back or do different things because it's outside of what we expected. So I would say it's hard to predict, and it's hard to control the supply chain is the other thing that's been extremely challenging. You know, we have, well, I'll use one of our capital projects for say, we were proactive and ordered the piece of equipment that we needed in March, knowing that there was a supply-demand issue, supply chain issue, we still don't have it. And right now, I think it's estimated to be here in November. That means we won't even be able to work on the project till after kids are done with school in June. So, you know, that'll be a year and a three months later. Hopefully, we can get the work done prior to June 30th to get it in this budget year. So, I mean, there's a lot of, we try to be really tight and be conservative, but there's just a whole lot of things that can happen that we don't expect as well.
There are no other comments and questions. Out here, a motion to approve the preliminary budget for 2223.
Second?
Any discussion on the motion? Here, if you could please take a roll call.
Commissioner Farrar? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Isner?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Preliminary budget is approved. Again, we will finalize that on the 24th. At this time, we'll move to our regular board debrief, and I'll turn it to Commissioner Lyons to lead us through.
You know, I'm in this board meeting. And one of the things that just staying with me was in, in all of my time in education, at the university, and in my own education, the importance of the extracurricular, athletics, and all of those things that I see that is time on task, that students are in choir and in music and in forensics and in the leadership opportunities that are occurring on fields is such an important part of the educational environment. And I, it, and I thought of it when we were talking about some of the, the educational outcomes, and I, I just wanted to say that because I, that, that's how I feel. And I, I think in those supports, those extracurricular and those, the things that gives a student that extra time on task and, and those experiences is just really critical to education. And that's positive. Also a positive, I, I think that the, the climate commitment is, the OE was good. I, with the budget, would just like to have more information when I'm approving. And I know we'll get that in, in approving the preliminary budget. I just, I, I don't feel like I'm doing my due diligence by, by flipping. I just, and, and that could be me. I was a finance person, I want to look at more numbers, but it's just the way I, I operate. So. Um, is it my turn to? Yeah, okay. Thanks. Commissioner, sir?
You? I have been appreciating the focus on results section. I think it's, it's interesting. I also, I do think that it gives us a unique opportunity. Part of what I've been really struggling with in this round of monitoring reports is just, there really hasn't been a lot. I don't know what artifacts to ask for, you know? And then there hasn't been a lot of like, actual artifacts to monitor the success of time over time. There's a lot of plans and kind of lofty ideas, but nothing really concrete to look at. And I feel like we're getting a little bit more of an idea of what some of those concrete things might be and what we really are interested in, in that focus on results section. So I think that was kind of a unique, you know, how we could use those strategically to sort of feed what we might want to see in specific monitoring reports. So that was kind of like an aha for me tonight, so that felt good. That's all I got for tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm, I'm still, I still struggle with this particular governance model, kind of, it kind of, how we continue to, because it's still early in the stages of adoption of this governance model, figuring out ways to make, I think, continue to figure out ways to make changes that work for all of our interpretation, but also that, that it works for the desired outcome for students, that it works for the desired understanding of the practitioners, teachers, and staff who have to deliver what we've somewhat put out here. So it's a, a work in, a work in progress, a work in progress for sure.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Clements.
Well, for me, as you, many of you know, I've been involved with the climate commitment since we drafted it. And, you know, it's, it's a tough one because it is an area of work that is outside much of what we typically handle with the district, you know, facilities and facility performance. And as you all know, a diminishingly small percentage of our budget is allocated towards these things. So I was pleased to see progress being made. I have a few notes that I was able to come up with relatively late that I don't, that didn't change the, the report, but there were kind of suggestions for contemplating how this iterates over the next few years that I'll, that I'll provide to Superintendent Johnson. But, you know, I think that's, that's an aspect that's, that's really important to how we affect the community in, in ways that we, that we often take for granted. You know, we are an educational institution. That's where we're focused justifiably. But, you know, so much of our operations touch the quality of life and public health for our community in many other ways and significantly through that aspect of our operation. So I'm glad we had the opportunity to talk about it because we often only do once or twice a year. You know, I, I felt like the energy was lower, and maybe because I'm remote, so I'm not there with you all, but I was able to follow well virtually. But, you know, I felt like my, both myself and just a little bit, the energy level was perhaps lower than, than a couple of weeks ago, perhaps because of the content or, or for some, for other reasons with, like, related to all of us running around to referendum meetings. But I'm, I'm glad to keep going through these, these OEs and see how we're fleshing out how we're monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you. President Nordine?
Thanks. I really appreciated the focus on results discussion tonight. Sightful questions and comments for Dr. Johnson, really, and Commissioner Lyons as well, everybody. I think that's, that is, the goal is for us to be talking about student results and to see those plans. And I do appreciate, I think that it does help us to know like, hey, these are things that we can look at year over year. These are goals that we need to bring forward. And I think that bringing them in, commissioners are, and asking for those specifically, I want to see if those artifacts come back. I want to see that discussion. I think for something that we need to continue working on, I think I'll echo Dr. Johnson. You know, we need, we do need to continue to make sure that we push ourselves, push the administration to make real change. That's something that I think we are of one mind of as a board, is that we want to see change, the better the outcomes for our students. And, you know, Mandy, I think you, I think you expressed that for yourself too, that you want that and you're trying to build that system. You know, it reminded me of, you know, the board's goal was to build a system that we could push for that, and I think that's happening. We know that process is slower, but it is a working process for it. And I think it is incumbent on us to continue to work to make those changes. So I'll echo that, and to make them changes that can work up and down the system and that our staff. And I, I'm hopeful that the way that you're implementing the collaboration and whatnot is, is going to be effective. But I think that's our responsibility as a board to make sure that we look for change within this system, keep working toward it. Thanks.
Commissioner Farrar?
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation on EMLSS, again, with the definition of educational equity. And it, it made me think about how too often conversations about equity are about, yes or no, which is, should we, should we pursue equity or should we not? And that's, that's not the question, actually. The, the question is how, how to do it. And so I appreciate that what we're engaged in, in, in looking at this plan and the plan of implementation is that we are beginning to talk about how we're going to do it. And we'll get more and, more and more specific as we go. But I, I really appreciate this distinction between whether or not to do it versus how to do it. And how to do it is, is the, the thing. I was also struck by the wide-ranging, different types of content that we discussed on this meeting, from the climate commission, commitment to educational equity and our plans to achieve it and our budget. And it just struck me that the, the job of the, the school board is, covers a lot of ground and it challenges me to, to get better at this job and to learn more about all the different work that the district is engaged in and all the different overlapping expertise that we need as a district to pursue any of those goals with any hope of success. So it's a challenge to me to, to become a more competent school board member.
Thank you. Speaking of the end, I will now hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourn.